Good evening, we're going to resume the testimony. The next three speakers are Jimmy Silver, Edwin Figueroa, and Roger Meltzer.
Good evening, I'm Jimmy Silver.
Good evening.
Hello.
Thanks for coming in.
You're welcome. I represent Spony, the small property owners of New York, and I wanted to tell you that the way owners feel about this process, maybe you've recognized it already because no owners are coming out to testify, it's because this Rent Guidelines Board process started in 1969. And for forty-five years, there was a certain methodology that was followed by every mayor that we had before Mayor de Blasio. And there was a recognition by every mayor that there was a bare minimum that had to be put back into the system. And that bare minimum had to be put back because it had to cover real estate taxes that the city takes from every property owner. And it was, it was universal through every mayor that there was a 2% floor that they couldn't go below. Because if they did, the system would start to fall apart because there wasn't enough money coming back into it to pay the city back for real estate taxes. But we look since 2014 at what has happened since de Blasio has taken over on this board, and the real estate tax component has gone up 6.1% on average, including this year for the five years. And the rent increase compensation has been 0.6%. It's undercompensation for owners. And that's why they don't come out to the hearings anymore, because they come out and they tell you their stories. And what do they get from the board? They get two rent freezes and two 1% increases. And it seems like the determinant now for this board is the NOI. And the NOI data that you're using is so faulty because out of the fifteen thousand buildings that are used in the NOI, as long as one building has one stabilized apartment, it's put into the mix. So the data is skewed. All the 421A buildings in New York City that pay no real estate tax are included in the NOI. Of course the NOIs are going to go up. They don't pay, one-third of their expenses is taken away from real estate taxes. If you're going to use the NOI as a sole determinant as to what increases are going to be, then you must refine it so that it's only giving you the NOI for totally rent stabilized buildings, not tax exempt buildings, and not buildings that have exempt apartments where the rents-
Excuse me, your time is up. Can you wind up your testimony?
I'm just explaining why you're not going to see a lot of owners at these hearings anymore. Because it seems like the determinant for this board has been shifted from the price index to the NOI figures. And the NOI figures are faulty data.
Thank you. Edwin Figueroa?
Good evening, thank you for coming in.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Ed Figueroa. I'm a tenant in the South Bronx. I've been following the Rent Guidelines Board for several years. Being a native New Yorker, I've seen how the economy has affected working-class folks all over the city and the outer boroughs. We workers have had to deal with stagnant income, no increases, basically recently. Every year, rents have gone up, the cost of living has gone up. However, when it comes to the landlords, you know, when you have a business, sometimes you do internal audits. We never get to see any internal audits. We just see how MCIs are used, adjustments for repairs. The constant argument is that other apartments are being damaged, so therefore we have to up the rent. But we never see any proof of this. You know, but the proof is working-class folks in the city of New York, the reality is we don't have the increases to keep up with these increases. You know, twenty years ago, there was a reinvestment program that came from the federal government. Landlords took advantage of that. I remember the J-51s. Landlords took advantage of that. Our rent still went up. Today, with the electoral system in the state of New York, under the guise of Revry, the politicians, the democracy, is at the mercy of the Real Estate Board of New York. You know, where is the accountability for tenants? You guys give us a lease at the beginning of the month, we have to pay the rent on time. However, when it comes to paying, doing repairs, we have no accountability. You know, we should have what you call a rent abatement. If you guys don't do the rent on time, there should be a state law that says if the rent, if the repairs are not done within a timely fashion, then that rent should be credited to the individuals. You know, you guys have all the muscle at your disposal. You know, it's a shame that we have to come, once a year, when you guys are better, you know, you guys know better. You guys outlawry, you outlawry us, you harass us. In the case of Chinatown tenants, you throw their stuff out into the street with the complicity of the Department of Buildings. We have a mayor who supposedly calls himself a progressive leader. You know, we don't, where's our help? Where's our assistance? Who's looking out for our interests?
Excuse me-
You know, open the books once in a blue. Let us see what's actually happening when you, when you come here and you ask for 1%, 2%, or whatever have you.
Excuse me, your time is up. Could you wind up your testimony?
Rent freeze, rent freeze.
Thank you. Roger Meltzer?
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for coming.
You're welcome. In 1966 and 1967, I was a platoon leader in the United States Army in Vietnam. Every month, my combat pay went into a savings account, and eleven years later, that was a down payment on an eight-family building in Brooklyn. I still live in that building. My wife and I raised two children there, and they went to New York City public schools from kindergarten through high school. Along the way, I also bought a nearby 27-family apartment building. So I've been an owner on a small scale for forty years now. I've taken several courses sponsored by HPD on building maintenance and energy conservation. I haven't had any building violations or even complaints in over twenty years. If something needs fixing, we take care of it. Since my buildings are 120 and 90 years old now, there's always something to be done. I think most owners want to do the right thing, but unfortunately, you only hear about bad owners at these hearings. My personal philosophy is I wouldn't rent an apartment unless I'd be willing to live in it myself. Right now, this week, we are upgrading the bathroom and kitchen of a tenant paying $750 per month. It will end up costing over $3,000. I just got a $14 a month increase for the next two years on that apartment. So the work is not compensatory, but we're doing it. This past year, I replaced three original stairwell windows at a cost of $4,000. We also cleaned and polished the marble wainscoting and the entry investipiel on the first floor for $2,400, and the fire escapes were painted for $7,500. In the upcoming year, my property taxes are going up 10%, and it was 8% in each of the two prior years. The elaborate formula that DHCR uses for rent control has increased the MBR by 25% since 2014. The rent stabilized increases that we've been given in the last four years are woefully inadequate, especially for buildings as old as the ones I have and which most owners of my size have. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Annie Tan, Ren Pit Chen, and Emily Mauch.
Hi, my name is Annie Tan.
Good evening, thank you for coming.
Thank you so much. I'm a Chinatown tenant. I'm a member of the Chinatown Tenants Union with Cav, and I am also a teacher. I'm here to speak on behalf of Chinatown as well as my students. So my mom and dad are both immigrants. They are naturalized citizens as of two Octobers ago. They only speak Chinese, and I'm very proud to be their daughter standing here in front of you today. They worked very hard. They had a community of people who spoke Chinese, who found jobs with them, who built community with them, and provided language services so that they could raise a beautiful family here in New York City. And I think this is the only place I can be because I am so proud to be a New Yorker for its diversity. I am a teacher of students who are Latino, Chinese, and Arabic. And language access is huge for my students. The New York State Technical and Education Assistance Center for Homeless Students found that last year, 100,000 students were homeless. That is one in every ten students in New York City. And that was a 5% increase from the previous year. And that is going to only be exacerbated if you raise the rent on these students, on my students' families. I know that with a rent increase on my rent stabilized apartment as a child, that my parents wouldn't have been able to afford the rent, especially after 9/11 when the sweatshops closed in Chinatown. I urge you, please hold, please have a rent freeze. Please protect my fellow Chinatown tenants from harassment and evictions. I beseech you to think about us who need the language access, because where will we go if we don't have Chinatown? Where will the Latino students speak Spanish? Where will Arabic students speak Arabic? Where will Chinese people speak Mandarin, Fujianese, Cantonese, Chao Chao, all the different Chinese dialects? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ren Pit Chen, and I think Mr. Chen needs a Mandarin interpreter. Good evening, thank you for coming.
I think the best way to work is if Mr. Chen speaks one sentence and then I repeat after him. But can we have extra time for this testimony?
Yes.
At least two more minutes, if possible, like four minutes total since we just started.
Yeah, it'll be double. We'll stop the clock when you're doing the interpretation.
Okay, thank you.
Could you ask him to speak closer to the microphone so everyone can hear?
To every leader, to every tenant, hello. My name is Chan Ren Ping. I live on Marlowe Street, number 53. I have lived there for sixteen years. They have always harassed us. So even when I'm not there, they have cut out the electricity and other utilities. So with the lease, it has my name on it, and utilities bill is also under my name. Every month, on the first and fifth, I will always send out a check to them. So in January, they had a lawyer send a letter to me telling me to move out in May. So I told them, you know, I've paid for my utilities, and you know, I have all the receipts. And they have told me to speak to a lawyer instead, but they also have their own lawyers. So every day when I go out to work or when I've come back from work, I've always greeted them, you know, when they're cleaning the area. So they would come to my home and ask me if I wanted to move out, and I've told them I don't want to move out. I've lived here for, you know, over ten years, and you know, they would just continue to come and ask me the same question. Like, how do you ask this question, you know, when I have lived there for over ten years? Obviously, if my name is on the lease, you know, I would have moved out immediately, but that is not the case. So in January, they stopped taking my rent, but then in May, they started taking my rent again. So in 2008, they used the same tactics and did not take my rent for five months. So in the Chinatown Tenants Union, we have a lawyer that helps us to go on court regarding this issue. So the lawyer has said to the landlord's lawyer that, you know, if you don't cancel the current accusation, you know, then, you know, that's basically legal because you're basically making something up.
Excuse me, his time is up. Could you ask him to wind up his testimony, please?
Our rent is already $1,520. We demand a rent freeze and a rent rollback.
Thank you. Emily Mauch?
Good evening, thank you for coming in. Good evening, thank you for holding this hearing. I am a Chinatown Tenants Union organizer. I'm also an educator and a cultural and community organizer. I originally come from San Francisco, which is facing a lot of gentrification displacement issues, which I'm sure you're also well aware of. And I wanted to talk a little bit about my experience of the first time coming to Chinatown and the relationship I've had with Chinatown over the years. One of the first times, I got off a Canal Street subway stop, and I was walking along Center Street. I was walking to the Museum of Chinese in America, and along the way, there used to be an old cafeteria-style diner that was Chinese-owned. In the window, it said "Five dishes for $5". I learned that that was a place, an affordable lunch spot, that lots of working-class people who live or work in Chinatown went to. So it was an important place for people to have affordable food. Since then, it's now been, the people who used to own the cafeteria have been displaced. The new place that is in that restaurant space is called Nickel and Diner. It's a very expensive diner. I think the name Nickel and Diner seems to be making fun of the fact that New York City diners used to be an affordable place to eat, a working-class place. And so when I see these kinds of places, I wonder, who is this for? And who can actually afford it? If we compare the places like Chinese bakeries or the over 130 galleries that are in Chinatown now, a gallery can sell a couple of paintings and make rent that month, and they probably have another gallery elsewhere and another city supporting them. A Chinese bakery probably needs to sell thousands of buns every month in order to make rent. The people who are going to Chinese bakeries are the longtime Chinese tenants. And so I just ask you to consider, who is this for? Who can afford it? And to hold that very close to you because homes are sacred. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Helen Rosenthal from the New York City Council.
Good evening.
Good evening, nice to see everyone here. Thank you for your patience in sitting through this, all these hearings, and really listening carefully. I appreciate what it is that you do. My name is Helen Rosenthal. I represent the Upper West Side, District 6, in the New York City Council. I thank the Rent Guidelines Board for this opportunity to testify, but I'm deeply, deeply disappointed that this board has taken preliminary steps to raise the rents. The board appears to have returned to a status quo that values the profit margins of landlords over the livelihoods of tenants. We're in the midst of an affordable housing crisis that shows little sign of improvement, and yet we're discussing the approval of rent increases that will put more affordable apartments and more New Yorkers in jeopardy. The financial incentives for landlords to remove these apartments from their regulated status and bring them to market value is simply too great. We're hemorrhaging affordable housing. A New York Times investigation last month found that New York City has lost over 152,000 regulated apartments since 1993 because, in the New York Times's words, quote, "Landlords have pushed the rent too high," unquote, and our rent laws have been gutted. My office has worked with thousands of tenants who are struggling to hold on to their rent stabilized apartments. Many of these tenants are seniors who have been in their apartments for decades and obviously living on fixed incomes now. New York City's rent-regulated households are profoundly vulnerable, on average paying more than one-third of their income in rent. When you are living with such, within such tight margins, you are forced to make very difficult decisions. As one of my constituents said to me, "Every rent increase means less money for essentials such as food and medication." Think about that. Is this the position in which we want to place our fellow New Yorkers, our seniors, our families, our disabled neighbors? And while the rent burdened tenants are fighting to remain in their homes, landlords' profits continue to rise. According to estimates from the board, in 2016, tenants' incomes remained stagnant for the fourth consecutive year, while landlords' profits increased by 4.4%. Look, I have no objections to landlords making a profit and certainly covering their costs, but they have done so for the last twelve years. As a city, we are facing the colossal twin costs of the loss of our affordable housing stock and a homelessness crisis that has reached historic proportions. For these reasons, I implore the board to reconsider the rent increase and to go one or possibly two steps further. We need a rent freeze and possibly a rollback so that New Yorkers can remain in their homes. Again, no one disputes that property owners have a right to cover their costs, but as we know, the rent stabilization law mandates that the board consider cost-of-living data and other relevant factors when considering an increase. Protecting residents and our affordable housing stock has to be our number-one priority. I'm happy to take any questions. If you don't have questions, I actually just want to say one more thing, but that's my testimony.
Any questions?
That's my testimony, and I'm sticking with it. I do just want to say that I'm the new chair of the Committee on Women, right? This is a new term in the City Council, and this is my new committee that I've headed, and I've only been chair for six months. Next week, we're going to have a hearing about maternal mortality outcomes and the great disparity between Black women in particular and white women, right? Black women are 12x more likely to die in New York City due to labor, childbirth, than a white woman, far greater than any other group of color. As we have been investigating the root causes of why this is so, it often comes back to stress. I mean, there is implicit and explicit bias among physicians. That's not relevant to what we're talking about here. But what is relevant is the enormous stress that people are living with every day. And you have to take into account the impact that stress has on health outcomes. Do you know that the healthcare quality of Black men in Harlem is equivalent to that of a Black man in Ethiopia? Our healthcare standards for Black men and women in particular are so degraded by the stressors in life. One major factor is housing, and that's only getting worse. So I just wanted to add that in as a reason why it's so important that we take those factors into account when we're thinking about people's rents. I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your testimony. The next speakers are Livia Sutton, Jin Fozeng, and Melanie Wong.
Hi, my name is-
Good evening, thank you for coming in.
Hi, thank you. My name is Livia Sutton. I've been a tenant, hi, excuse me, my name is Livia Sutton. I've been a tenant in Harlem in an SRO for nineteen, almost twenty years. And I moved there for affordability to get a one-bedroom apartment. And I went from making $10 an hour to up to $90,000 a year. On my way to getting a one-bedroom, my company went out of business. The people I worked for, they went out of business, and my hair got grayer. And although I have a great resume and I am a sought-out employee, well, the preference is younger, therefore my money is older, and it decreased. And now I live there because I have to. And thank you, I just want to say thank you for not increasing the SRO. No increase. I used to work for a real estate attorney that has over forty pieces of property. So I know the true costs of owning, of being a Realtor. And honestly, if building owners were really interested and cared about tenants, then why not come together and have us help you with the building? But I know it's all about the dollar. And don't we realize that we're stepping over homeless people more so? When I go to work, when I can work, I work sometimes three part-time jobs now, but I step over more homeless people. And the stress of homelessness on families is causing a mental breakdown. And I've got to deal with that with some of the people that I work with. Please, we got to bring some humanity here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jin Fozeng. I think this speaker needs a Mandarin interpreter.
Good evening. Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, you're good. Hello, everyone. I'm Zheng Qinghua.
Hello, everybody. My name is Zheng Qinghua.
I live at seventy-four, New York City, Manhattan, Seventy-Four Canal Street apartment.
I live at seventy-four, New York City, Manhattan, Seventy-Four Canal Street apartment. Five A.
The main issue is the rent is too high.
My rent is currently about nine hundred so dollars. And I'm retired, so I'm feeling very stressed.
I just hope the government doesn't let us rent.
I hope that you will not raise the rent. That will have a rent freeze.
Now, I'm paying the mortgage, and my daughter is paying half of it. My daughter is paying half of the mortgage. She can't pay the mortgage. My daughter is paying half of the mortgage. Now, I can still pay it, but if I keep paying it, I can't pay the mortgage.
My daughter helps to pay half the rent right now, so we're still able to meet the rent needs. But if it keeps increasing, it probably would not be possible.
I used to live with my sister, but she had passed away. And so it's become increasingly difficult to stay in the apartment. I just hope the government doesn't let us rent. It would be better if it was lower.
So I feel that, really hoping that the rent will not increase and that you guys can do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Wong.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for holding this hearing. My name is Melanie Wong, and I'm the lead organizer at the Chinatown Tenants Union, which is part of Cav Organizing Asian Communities. We work with rent-stabilized tenants in Chinatown, mostly Fujianese and Cantonese immigrants. I came here before the board last year to talk about how MCI rent increases were affecting our tenants. And I want to say first off that they are continuing to take a really strong toll. And I've seen many cases pop up over the course of this year. But I also want to tell you a story about outreach we did in a building last week on Broom Street. I won't say the exact address for their privacy. But this building is owned by a small landlord in Chinatown, a Fujianese landlord. And the tenants in this building are victims of incredible harassment and really what I would consider to be extortion. In order to even move into the building, the landlord extracts ten thousand dollars or thirteen thousand dollars, some tenants told me, in what they call tea-drinking money, which is a common practice in Chinatown. Tea-drinking implies it's money that you pay under the table when you meet with somebody over tea. Right? So in addition to paying security, in addition to paying the normal rent as one would, tenants are spending ten to thirteen thousand dollars in this building just to move in. Okay? And then after they move in, after they pay this kind of money, the landlord pursues civil lawsuits for made-up frivolous damages charges because tenants are unable to find legal representation that they can afford. And this forces tenants to pay damages or move out of the apartment. So this kind of cycle of extortion is what we are seeing in Chinatown. And it's not just small landlords who are using these kinds of practices. Larger landlords will use major capital increases to making tremendous construction in buildings, construction that tenants don't feel is needed, construction that often negatively impacts the course of their lives, and add, I've seen anywhere from sixty dollars to apartment to a hundred and fifty and four hundred and fifty dollars per apartment in rent-stabilized apartments. Allowing these kinds of practices essentially takes away the purpose of rent stabilization. So for landlords to, on one hand, be benefiting from these kinds of underhanded, under-table practices, and on the other hand, being also able to receive rent increases in the normal course of practice, means that tenants are getting it, are basically being hit by both ends. Right? And it is unconscionable. And the rate at which we are losing housing and affordable housing in Chinatown is profound. The rate at which gentrification is impacting the community is profound. And many members of the community live in Chinatown because it is there that they have access to the languages, the resources, the services, the cultural needs that matter really strongly to their lives. There are folks that leave Chinatown and commute an hour or two hours every week just to see people and access services.
Excuse me, your time's up. Could you wind up your testimony, please?
Okay. And I'll just close to say that affordability is important in Chinatown, not only for the sake of affordability alone, but for preserving this community and all that it represents for immigrants in New York City.
Thank you.
The next three speakers are Ellen Flowers, Kenny Shaffer, and Man Wai Tsui.
Hi there.
Good evening. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Hi. I saw you on Tenant Action, and that's what brought me here. Thank you for the show. Thank you for being on the show. Please, I watch it religiously. I watch it every week religiously. I'm obsessed. I'm obsessed because I am afraid of being homeless again. Okay? Homeless again. I can't afford to pay these rent increases. I work every day just to pay my rent. Just to pay my rent and my basic bills. My rent, my cable bill, my phone bill, my Con Ed bill, and have food. That's it. What am I gonna do? And people like me, who can't afford to pay these rent increases? I don't know what people are gonna do. I know what I'm gonna do because if I can't afford to pay my rent and I get evicted, I'm going back into the shelter system. That's my choice. Because eventually, I see myself going in that direction because I'm not gonna be able to keep up with these rents on a paycheck. I live from paycheck to paycheck, like most of us do. I'm single now, so everything is on me. I have nobody to depend on. And God forbid, if I'm evicted, I can't go stay in my friend's house. You definitely can go to your family's house and say, "Well, open the door and let me stay. Let me come in." No. It doesn't work like that anymore. That's not reality. Reality is the shelter system. And we don't need more people flooding into the shelter systems because we're already overburdened. So you could imagine what's gonna happen. If the rents keep going up, it's gonna push more and more people into the system. The working-class people like myself. I'm the working class. And it's a shame that, you know, it's basically empty here. I'm shocked that more people haven't come out, you know, to speak about what's going on because eventually, the city's gonna be unaffordable for working-class people. Lower-income working-class people like myself and many others. That's all I have to say. Please, please, please. My apartment is all I have and my job. And who knows? Jobs are not guaranteed. You could have a job today and be out tomorrow. So you're a paycheck away. I know I am. And then if I'm a paycheck away, I can't pay my rent, and I'm in the street and I'm in the shelter, back in the shelter.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Kenny Shaffer.
Good evening. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kenny Shaffer, and I'm the board chair of the Metropolitan Council on Housing, which is New York's oldest tenants' rights organization. Let me remind you that the board was created by the Rent Stabilization Law, which was enacted because oppressive rents had created a serious threat to public health, safety, and general welfare. That's why you're here. Yet this board often acts as if your mission is to protect landlord profits. Sure, Section 510 of the law says that you have to look at the health of the real estate industry. Fine, thank you, as well as everything else. But the purpose of rent stabilization and of this board is to protect tenants from unaffordable rents. So before you vote next week, please reread the Findings and Declaration of Emergency in the Rent Stabilization Law, which I've attached to my written testimony for your convenience. If protecting landlords were your job, you've done it far too well. Profits were already exorbitant when rent stabilization was enacted in response and have risen inexorably for decades as homelessness and tenant misery have continued to worsen in large part because of speculative and compounded RGV increases. Owners' profits have risen twelve years in a row, and now a staggering forty-two percent of every rent dollar is going in their pocket, according to the two thousand eighteen Income and Expense Study. Are they satisfied? Never. They always want more. So as you anticipate imposing yet another rent increase on the back of New York's working families, I do not have to refer you to this year's Income and Affordability Study to understand what this would mean to a million tenant families who are already struggling to provide necessities. Just open your eyes and ears, and more importantly, your hearts and your minds, to the tenants who have spoken at your hearings and are yet to come. They aren't lobbyists or professional obfuscators. They are the people you took an oath to protect. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Man Wai Tsui.
Good evening. Thank you for coming in.
My name is Man Wai Tsui. I live in Chinatown for twenty-eight years.
He said he wanted to start with basic English.
All right.
I have an experience.
I lived in the building for twenty-eight years. So in the past year and a half, we have changed, there's a change in the owner. So we, well, when the owner changed, there were more problems. Before, with the old owner, we didn't have to call 311. But then after we changed the new owner, we had to call 311 every day. So during the winter, there were issues with the boiler, and the landlord refused to fix it. And the first time, there was smoke that came out of the boiler. So the second time, the boiler actually got on fire. But we were lucky because they had came to stop the fire pretty soon when it happened. So we didn't have hot water or gas because of damages to the boiler. And we didn't have it for an entire year before the temporary boiler came in. So throughout that year, you know, us tenants, we came together. You know, we had gone into our community of resources, including the Chinatown Tenants Union, to try to fix this issue. I felt really unhappy for that period of time and actually felt almost like I was persecuted. And they kept harassing us tenants. So with the new boiler, came a new owner. So I don't understand why the new owner spent a lot of money on that boiler. But I understand that it is an investment, but that the government should protect us. So the main message that I feel like I want to give to the new owners or people that are investing in buying the buildings is that, you know, it's not necessarily always about the profit. And, you know, we shouldn't be harassed because we're more vulnerable as low-income people. I don't know how the new owner makes money now, but what I know is that we're not living very happily right now.
Thank you. I love America. Everything has a here.
So I want to make a request to the RGV that not to raise the rents because, you know, with Chinatown, we're a community. You know, we have a lot of unique cultural things. And just in general, you know, there is a value in our community. And so we urge you to keep the rent as it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I need to make an announcement at this point. If there's anyone here who wishes to speak, if you haven't already registered, you must register with the RGV staff by eight P.M. in order to be able to speak.
Thank you. And could we have the Mandarin interpretation of that also, please?
Thank you. So could you just announce that if there's anyone here who hasn't registered and they want to speak, they need to register by 8:00 PM in order to be able to speak? Thank you. The next two speakers are Suzie Schrop and Jill Rappaport. Good evening. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. Rent Freeze Now. I'm Suzie Schrop from the East Village. I'm a Shalom tenant, and despite years of harassment, I've managed to hold on to our rent stabilized apartment. This is my seventeenth year before the RGV. Within two years of ownership, my landlords deregulated nineteen of twenty units. They own about a hundred buildings in Manhattan alone and all display similar ratios of deregulation. My landlord's rental income increased by 350% in the first two years of ownership alone, and it has dramatically grown over the years. The new tenants are students who are not contributing members to the community, nor do any of them pay taxes. Turnover is on steroids. I believe the RGV has aided the massive deregulation of rent regulated housing by granting high rent increases. Last year, once again, owners received increases despite decades of compounded increases. Owners are doing exceptionally well. Tenants, like myself included, are struggling. We're in the worst affordable housing crisis since the 70s with no improvement in sight. New York is becoming impossible to live for creative people. Utility costs are through the roof, and I often find myself struggling to pay them. Some things, some things I charge on my credit card, but that option has ended with a credit limit. In contrast, the handful of owners who struggle have the New York DHCR hardship program. And in the past two decades, none of them have utilized this program. For tenants, there's virtually nothing. I'm currently paying 85% of my income in rent. For tenants like me, every increase means the ability to keep a roof over my head is slipping away. Like the majority of rent regulated tenants, I really, really need a substantial rent rollback or at least another rent freeze. As always, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Jill Rappaport.
Hi, I came...
Good evening. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. I was here on a recent hearing last year, and I remember saying that these hearings should, really must be publicized in a much more widespread manner so that the tenants and working people in New York can know that they're happening without having to go to the RGV website to find out, which I had to do. That's one thing. I also think it should be mandatory that big property owners and developers like Steven Ross of the Related Companies should be, they should really be here. They should be forced to be here. They're not here because they don't want us looking at them. I read recently that the notorious slumlord Stephen Croman got out of jail several months early. And went and was not only let out early to go to Greece with his family to celebrate his release, but went straight back into harassing his tenants, including his business tenants. And he got rid of the Vivaldi Cafe, which was one of the people he, the owner was one of the people he harassed and whose lives they destroyed. This is outrageous. You've heard the saying, "Housing is a human right." There is, no one is saying small property owners should not be allowed to make back their investment or to, you know, break even. But if your primary care doctor said, "Well, I'm not going to treat you unless you pay me 50 times what the going rate is," you would not like that. And that, or if your doctor or, you know, or if your schoolteachers were to do that, it would be not tolerated. And this is what is happening in New York, and that's why New York is becoming a ghost town. Why, it is a city for the rich and rich investors who don't even live in these high rises that they destroy our views, our sightlines, our air, and our light with. And these are the people driving the housing crisis in New York. And one of them is Donald Trump. Housing is a human right. And I want to say one more thing. This morning, on my way out of the apartment, I live in Chelsea in Penn South, I saw some feet sticking out of a rolling cart, one of those bins that people put stuff in to roll them. It was a homeless guy sleeping in a rolling cart. I thought, well, I've seen, I've seen a lot of things, but this is the first time I've seen that. These increases are much too high, and there should be a rollback, a many-year rollback, and a rent freeze would be the only thing that would be fair. Thank you.
Thank you. We have no further registered speakers. If anyone wants to speak this evening, you should register with the RGV staff. We're going to take about a 10-minute break, see if there are going to be any further speakers, and then we'll resume. Thank you. Can we get the translation of that, please? At least in Spanish. Sir, can you repeat what you said? We have no further registered speakers at this time. If anyone here would like to speak, you should register with the RGV staff. We're going to take a 10-minute break. Thank you. Okay, we're going to resume. We have no further registered speakers, but Andrew McLaughlin is going to read the testimony of someone who's been coming to these hearings for many, many years and was unable to be here this evening. So that will be our final order of business.
My name is Anita Rahm. I am the songwriter for Metropolitan Council on Housing. I have been coming here since 1994. And most of the time, you have raised rents much more than necessary. According to the Income and Expense Study, most landlords' incomes have come up more than their expenses. The Income and Affordability Study, many tenants respond, many tenants are spending more than 50% of their income on rent. This will have a devastation, a devastating effect on our city's economy because when people can't afford goods and services, businesses will close and jobs will be lost, and homelessness has increased. You can... Same. You can atone for some of this by rolling back the rents and you can save... You can save an entire generation and species of rent stabilized tenants. Laissez faire mon derrière respectfully submitted Anita Rahm.
Okay, do I hear motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. We're adjourned. Thank you all very much for coming. We appreciate your testimony this evening.